Bienvenidos, welcome to the Half Moon Bay City Council meeting, April 16, 2024. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Reddick? Councilmember Penrose?
Here.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Here.
Vice Mayor Varrback?
Here.
Mayor Jimenez?
Here.
You have a call.
May we stand for the pledge? Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Motion to approve?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Proclamations, presentations? Okay, thank you. Mayor's announcements. I would like to invite you all to stop by in New Office here in Half Moon Bay. The Opportunity Center of the Coast Side. It's 637 Main Street. It's part of the Economic Recovery Initiative that was approved by the City of Half Moon Bay about two years ago. If you get a chance, come and visit. We have a Chamber of Commerce, the Renaissance Center, Job Train, and Coast Side Ventures. Also, I would like to give a big thanks to the Sheriff's Department and the CHP. Over the weekend, there was an event south of Half Moon Bay at the Buddhist Temple. There was a lot of traffic. It was more people than they expected, and they had to park on the side of the road over Highway 1. The CHP and the Sheriff's Department were able to maintain safety of the location. No, there was no accidents, no injuries, and I want to thank them to make sure that our visitors, our community, are safe on down the highway. Thank you. Any reports from our closed session?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The Council has not met recently in closed session, so nothing to report out.
City manager updates?
We have one city manager update tonight. I'm looking for Assistant City Manager John Doughty. I'm not seeing him, so I'll make the announcement. We wanted to just invite the community out this Saturday from 9:00 a.m. till noon. Downtown is our annual Preparedness Day. There's John making a grand entrance. I'll let him run with it.
I apologize, Council and community. Yes, thank you, City Manager, for filling in. This weekend, this coming Saturday, 9:00 to 12:00, we do have our annual Coast Side Preparedness Day. We have fun for all in the family, educational and informational. We have Bouncy House and some other things for the kids, so feel free to come out. We hope folks come over from the farmer's market or wherever they are, or before they go over, if there's any soccer occurring. But we have a host of people. CERT is going to be there. CARES team will be there. The folks from the Harbor District and across the board, PG&E, all kinds of folks there to present. We have the Fire Department in full force, DEM as well. And this year's focus is kind of on wildfire and wildfire prevention and response to that as we're heading into, after a very wet winter, heavy brush growth and grass growth. So we thought that would be sort of the theme of the year. So we're excited, hope to see any and all of you within the community there. And we switched to a morning this year in hopes that that works for folks better. We'll learn from that and figure out and get some response for that. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you. Moving on to our public forum. Hal Wagner?
Good evening, Councilmembers. Good to see you. I usually don't get to make it down on a Tuesday evening because I have an activity, which tonight doesn't start until like 10:45. I attended the opening of your Priority Setting Day, and one of the things that kind of came through as a big concern was city deficits and the possibility that tax increase proposals will need to go to the voters. And I wanted to kind of flag to you as Councilmembers that I think there's a lot of input from people in the city that I've been getting in various different areas. People I just run into, you know, who have this concern or that concern. There's a lot of concerns out there that I think are not being heard. Maybe they're not percolating up to the Council. But, you know, it kind of reminds me of the period in which the school board, after $30 million school construction bond was passed in '96, and they didn't start into the middle school, but instead let it get tied up with a development that failed. And yet, for 10 years maybe, while it was stuck there, they kept putting parcel taxes on the ballot, none of which passed. Then finally, they addressed the building of the middle school, and the next parcel tax passed. So, you know, next week, there's going to be a Planning Commission hearing, asking for a waiver to build a five-story building and have very little parking for 555 Kelly. You know, there are some people very concerned about that. And I think once there's one five-story building, there will inevitably be more five-story buildings. Things like this should go before the voters. I think there are other things also that you can get out there and hear more about. And I just wanted to kind of raise that awareness on the part of the Councilmembers. I don't know if any of you on the Council have walked the project area on Poplar Street, but we just received notice that that's about to see bulldozers come and demolish things right to, you know, a bunch of lines. Yet, I haven't heard whether the trees at the corner of Main and Poplar are being saved or not. There's very little communication from staff. I'd like to see more communication and a lot more involvement from the Councilmembers because it just kind of feels like after COVID that, you know, maybe there's been less of that that needs to pick back up. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person, Trish Hayward?
Hello, thanks for listening. I'm Trish Hayward. I'm from Half Moon Bay. And I want to introduce a topic that a few of us will be talking about tonight, which is the safety and security of Redondo Beach Drive. So you heard us talk about this a few weeks ago. We're now wanting to bring it up to City Council as an issue that we'd like to have on the agenda in an upcoming meeting. There are kind of continuing problems with safety and security on the road. We have people who are coming in at night, driving too fast. There's been fence jumps along the road, people who are drunk or have gotten in fights and coming into community, into the neighborhoods. We've had a shooting, which was like people vandalism, shooting lights out in the community right around there. And so we really think that security in that neighborhood is a challenge. And what we know is that there's a gate there right now, and that gate used to be closed. And we would like that gate to be closed again. And we know that there's precedent for this at Poplar, at the Wave Crest Smith Field, and even in state parks around along Route 1. So I'd like to ask that this be put on the agenda in an upcoming meeting so that we can all discuss it and come up with a plan to close that gate. By the way, we've talked to the sheriff. The sheriff is willing to close the gate if the sheriff is told to close the gate. And we've talked to the golf maintenance team, and the golf maintenance team is willing to open the gate in the morning. So it would be an easy fix. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Julie Espagnolo?
Hi, similar topic to Trish. I live right along. Similar topic to Trish. I live right along Redondo Beach Road, so I have seen firsthand some of the security issues that Trish is mentioning. So much of that, I think, could be alleviated by just locking that gate at dusk. We see things like literally cars drag racing at 11 o'clock at night, which will have a, you know, safe outcome for the folks doing that. I did have to call the sheriff about three weeks ago because at the end of Redondo Beach Road, about 9 o'clock at night, there was a very large group of what looked like underage kids congregating. There was at least 40 of them. They had pallets getting ready to burn. They had coolers of beer. They were going to start to try to go down those bluffs, which at night is so dangerous that it's just going to not end well as well. So there have been multiple phone calls that I personally made to the sheriff about issues on Redondo Beach Road, which, again, I think, as Trish said, just locking that gate is a very simple and I think it will be a very effective way to help with all of the issues, including, you know, what looks to be some type of drug activity along that road at night. If you walk or bike or drive down there, you can see activity that's going on that really, you know, probably would not occur if that gate was locked. So, thank you.
Thank you. Linda Donato?
Hi, Mayor and Council. Hello? Okay. Hi, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name's Linda Donato. I live in Ocean Colony. I just moved in a year ago last February. And safety is always a major concern for anybody. They want to feel safe in their homes. And I think with the gate closure, that would be an easy solution since Trish already mentioned there's somebody available to close it at night and open it in the morning. There shouldn't be additional responsibility because that's already taken care of. And I think that's really a good issue. I don't live on the line of facing Redondo Beach, but I do walk that road. And I do witness cars that are moving too fast on that road. And there's children walking through there, whether they live there or not, whoever comes there. There's always children there, too. So it's not that safe back there. So I agree with Trish that it's an easy solution. And I hope, you know, Mayor and Councilmembers, that you put this through on the next, you know, meeting agenda so we can get it put through or at least discuss it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Betsy Quitsinat?
Good evening, Councilmembers. I'm following up also with the same concern that we're hoping that we can get this added to a future agenda about the concerns about the gate not being locked at night. So we're looking to get it locked at dusk and opened in the morning. I think one of the things that really struck me about the activity that's going on is listening to a mom of a teenager who shared with us that her daughter had said, "Well, actually, Mom, we all go to Redondo Beach Road at night because the beach, Poplar, is locked, and so we all go down there." Everybody knows that's the place to go after dark. So we're hoping that that can get, this can be put on an agenda for our future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Crook?
Thanks, appreciate it. Thanks, everybody, for your time. I have nothing to add other than I'm here for the same reason, which, as a resident of Half Moon Bay, I witness, I'm a regular user of that street and out there, and I see late at night that there's a lot of safety concerns. And I really think that it should be added to an agenda, looked at, and carefully considered before any action is taken. I think everybody else already said everything else, so thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Crook?
Good evening, Councilmembers. Just to reiterate, sorry to do this one more time, but it is a real safety concern, and especially after hours. That's kind of when we see the bad activity that goes on down at the end of Redondo. And the other issue that has been coming up is, you know, the possibility of RVs parking down there, spending the night. And so if it was possible that we could further discussion by getting it added to an agenda in the future, that would be really appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Albert Quitsinat?
Good evening, Councilmembers. I have the same subject, that is Redondo Beach Road. We've attended the previous meetings, which discussed the expansion of the parking area there. And while we support that in general, we are concerned about security measures. I'm also concerned about the condition of the road, not just the gate itself. And we hope that the Council considers taking the same approach to Redondo Beach Road as you do for Poplar Beach, that we're consistent in our approach and how we manage our access to the beaches and make sure it has good security as well for the residents in the area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Selena Zing?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, honorable City Councilmembers. As a member of YCATS, a youth organization focused on climate activism, I am working towards environmental improvement. A primary issue we face today is the proliferation of artificial turf in our society. Usually, this type of plastic grass includes chemicals such as PFAs that are used to coat the grass to prevent them from sticking to each other, which have varying impacts. Firstly, the EPA has done studies showing that these chemicals could result in health effects in the endocrine system and contain metabolic effects upon contact or ingestion. Additionally, this type of plastic is also terrible for the environment as it isn't easily broken down and thus ends up in places like water and soil, which leads to terrible environmental degradation and pollution. Independently, synthetic turf also presents a health issue to people as it overheats often. During games, children and students are susceptible to being impacted by the heat. In fact, football players have been shown to be 11 times more likely to suffer health illnesses on artificial turf. Therefore, we encourage a ban on artificial turf to promote a safer and healthier environment for all people. This would mean that instead of using synthetic grass, people would go back to the safer natural grass. And to address common points of concern about its convenience and cheap cost, studies have actually concluded that synthetic grass does not last as long as assumed, and the benefit thus does not offset the initial cost of installation. We strongly believe that it is vital that we implement a ban on artificial turf for the safety of our community and city and environment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Chloe Xiao?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening to the esteemed members of the Half Moon Bay City Council, and thank you for all your work. My name is Chloe, and I'm here today with YCATS, a youth climate action team. Recently, the increasing popularity of the usage of artificial turf in schools, sports centers, and residential lawns has been causing devastating impacts on the environment, which will only worsen with time. Given the earlier discussion of artificial turf plays a part in environmental habitat destruction through the degradation of microplastics, in addition to the PFAS mentioned by Selena, materials used in artificial turfs include polyethylene, polypropylene, and nylon, fragments of which can make their way into the soil as a form of microplastics pollution. Not only does this activity undermine conservation efforts, artificial turfs also passively replace the benefits of real grass. They absorb much more radiation than living grass and displace plants that could combat the increasingly quick process of global warming. While the long-term environmental impacts of the prolonged usage of artificial turfs are disastrous, the current effects are also extremely harmful. Artificial turfs are a major heat hazard, specifically in places such as fields and stadiums where the players are most affected. A recent university study found that the surface temperature of synthetic turf at a football practice field was 37 degrees higher than the air temperature. Additionally, they are a major source of lead exposure. The aforementioned microplastics, nylon and polyethylene, may contain levels of lead that pose a potential public health concern. According to Jackie Lombardo, a member of the Sierra Club National Toxics Committee, we know that older turf products contain toxic chemicals associated with asthma, loading disabilities, and cancer. In order to play our part in maintaining safety within our environment and fighting climate change, I urge you to issue a moratorium on artificial turfs. This would mean that we would return using real grass within fields. Despite the common perception that costs would increase, real grass is not only more beneficial in the long run and more safe, but also not more expensive. Both require similar amounts of maintenance, with artificial turf actually requiring more upfront costs. Therefore, the benefits of artificial turf are best minimal, especially compared to the negative impacts. As safety is an important value within Half Moon Bay, we believe this is of utmost importance and should be the first item on any environmental agenda. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mandy?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello and good evening, honorary Half Moon Bay City Councilmembers. My name is Amanda, and I'm currently a junior in high school. I'm part of YCATS, a youth organization of high schools originally based in the Bay Area, California. One thing that we're very concerned about right now is the prevalence of synthetic turf and the health hazards that it poses. Synthetic turf is becoming increasingly popular, implemented across schools, parks, and cities. A lot of people will assume that it's more convenient or easier to maintain, or that artificial turf saves water. However, there's countless health hazards involved that outweigh the benefits of using artificial turf. First of all, artificial turf overheats easily, resulting in heat injuries. For example, the commencement speech at UC Davis in 2022 was cut short due to multiple students passing out on overheated artificial turf and having to be hospitalized. The athletes who play on artificial turf are also heavily impacted by heat-related illnesses playing on synthetic turf. Football players are 11 times more likely to suffer a heat-related illness playing on synthetic turf. And between 2015 and 2017, the deaths among high school athletes from heat stroke doubled. Younger children are also the most affected. They are smaller, have higher metabolic rates, and are less able to cool their bodily temperatures and can't regulate hydration if unsupervised as well. On top of causing heat injuries, overheated plastic turf also kills the earth beneath and produces runoff of toxic and carcinogenic chemicals known to leach from the petrochemical plastic grass product. Secondly, artificial turf exposes those who play on it to an increased risk of diseases and injuries. For example, The Guardian published an article on the potential link between six athlete deaths from cancer to synthetic turf. The NFLPA also states that players risk a 28% increased chance of experiencing non-contact injuries from playing on artificial turf. Now, many NFL players are pushing to implement natural grass on all playing fields. As stated in the Santa Clara County Medical Association letter to the Board, a 2019 University Hospital Sports Medicine Institute study also found that athletes were 58% more likely to sustain an injury during athletic activity on artificial turf. Casualties involving turf are extremely common throughout the pro-sports industry and can even affect our own communities. We have to take action now in order to prevent injuries to our communities and make safer choices for the good of students. We need to use these fields on the daily. I urge you to follow in cities like Mowbray Split Step and agenda on more tolerant or a ban on artificial turf in order to fully prevent its use overall. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. We move on to the consent calendar. Is anybody interested in pulling any of the items?
I'd like to pull one F, please.
Me, too.
Can I have a motion to approve the rest of the items on the consent calendar?
I move that we approve the waiving the reading of resolutions and ordinances, that we accept the warrants list for the month of February 2024, that we receive and file position letters for Assembly Bill 1567, Senate Bill 1465, a federal appropriations request, federal appropriations support, and a vehicle license fee allocation request, that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute Amendment Number 7 to the Professional Services Agreement with ELS Architecture and Urban Design for additional construction administrative services for the John L. Carter Park Improvements Project, CIP Number 0611, increasing the contract by $33,700 for a new total not to exceed the amount of $685,047. That we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to award and execute a construction contract to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Andreeni Brothers Incorporated of Half Moon Bay, California, in the amount of $370,078, and approve a construction contingency 15% amount not to exceed $55,509.52 for the 2024 Street Maintenance Project, CIP Project Number 0514, for a total construction budget of $425,579.60.
Second.
Can I have a roll call?
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Varrback?
Yes.
Mayor Jimenez?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Can we have somebody present for item 1F?
I pulled this item not because I don't approve of it, but just the opposite. I think it's extremely important that the City Council sends a message to the buyer of Seton Coast Side and Seton Daly City that the entire coast side would benefit tremendously if we had an urgent care facility. And the logical place to put it would be in the building that currently, or until recently, had a on- that currently, or until recently, had a on-call emergency room. But we really need an urgent care facility, not an emergency room. Those of you who have been here a while know that Stanford used to have such a facility right across the street here. It was well-used. We need to discuss how we're going to do it financially. I'm a member of the age-friendly urgent care medical team. We've been working with many providers on the coast side. And I think we should send a definite message by having a very clear roll call vote to tell the leaders of Seton Coastside that it's time that they develop the facilities, the infrastructure, the staffing, to have a facility that's open most days, most hours, that would be accessible to the entire coast side.
Thank you.
Yes, I also wanted to pull this item for the similar reasons to Councilmember Rarback. As a retired physician, I understand the importance, the significance of having an emergency room here on the coast. So I am not in favor of replacing the emergency room, but adding to it. I think having an emergency room is critical, but I think having urgent care is going to help many, many more people, many, many more patients who currently now have to drive over the hill just to get simple blood work done. It is unconscionable that we haven't had one up to this point. And as Councilmember Rarback noted, the groups that we have been working with are represented by medical providers from Kaiser, Sutter, the county, Dignity Health, and others, who are all in favor of cooperating to create an urgent care here on the coast. I think it is critical that the public speak out. In speaking the other day to one of the, I guess it was the chief medical officer at Seton Daly City, he had no idea that there was a need for an urgent care on the coast. And if he didn't know it, what the heck, you know? It's crazy. So I think that if the general public stands up and writes letters to Seton and Daly City and says, "When you do your renovations over this next six months to create a better skilled nursing facility and a better emergency room, please add an urgent care." Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments, Council? Do we need to?
We need a motion, yes.
May I have a motion?
I move that, we adopt a resolution urging AHMC Seton to develop the necessary infrastructure to staff and maintain an urgent care center serving the medical needs of the entire coast side no later than December 2024.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose? Vice Mayor Rarback?
Yes.
Mayor Jimenez?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We now move on to our ordinance and public hearings.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers on time.
Thank you.
I'll start with her. Thank you again. This is an item that has been subject of your discussions for several, several months going on. I will try to be brief on this and allow most of the conversation to occur between you and also within the community if there are questions. But I will endeavor to try to provide some information on this. So don't want to belabor this point, but we started this travel together back in November officially when we conducted a workshop and you directed several things to occur, including moving forward with the Costa Hawkins based rent stabilization program. And that's why we're here on this item tonight. On the 19th of March, we conducted a follow-up study session. In that study session, you provided policy direction to staff with regard to relocation assistance in particular. And on the rent stabilization, sorry. And again, consistent with Costa Hawkins, you confirmed that that was where you wanted to go. And then with that process, you also authorized us to proceed with revising Chapter 6.02, which is a separate item tonight, dealing with the housing definitions. Just to clarify for those wondering what would this apply to? What does rent stabilization apply to? Basically, city limits is the easy piece of that. And then you work your way into duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, and multifamily units that were built prior to 1995, February 1 of 95. So our best estimate, and we're still working through the data on that, was somewhere between 350 and 400 units that we believe this would be applicable to. And that remains our best estimate at this point. But we're getting closer to being able to truly identify the numbers as we look at the work we're doing on the portal and registration program. The Chapter 6.06 does again create a title called Residential Rent Stabilization. As you recall, in February, you adopted and created a new Title VI, which was all related to housing. So this chapter would basically create rent stabilization and basically establish certain classification of stabilized units, meaning those subject to this ordinance. And again, I stated what those would apply to. And rent stabilization at its core simply limits the annual rent adjustments on stabilized units, and this is prospectively. And it sets, under your draft ordinance proposed tonight, it sets maximum annual rent adjustments to the lesser of 3% or 80% of the annual consumer price index for the region. This provides fair return for landlords, creates petition process by hearing officer for consideration of requests for greater adjustment, particularly in light of unforeseen things like major, major capital projects, unforeseen other cost factors. And it also provides that the city council consider and be the appeal body for any decisions of the hearing officer. Again, it provides for a petition process for tenants as well. And it requires noticing to tenants by landlord. One of the elements of this is it requires it both in English and in the language that is preferred and identified and preferred by the tenant. And then the key to this also for folks is this allows for a reset of rent-to-market rate upon vacation of the stabilized unit, which is in great part why the tenant protection, Chapter 6.08, is critical to go together with this in that there, absent those protections, there is some incentive for folks to be removed from the homes to allow units to be increased in price up to the market rate due to those vacancies. I won't belabor this. We've talked about this the last time, but this does represent a new program for the city. There's going to be administrative efforts and costs associated with this. We will have to bring on a mediator, hearing officer. We're going to be working with legal aid. Legal aid will be more focused on tenant protection side, but there's still someplace for them. And but this will also provide an opportunity for education and outreach to both tenants and landlords alike. Again, just for those that, you know, might have been not aware, it does not apply to single-family homes, condominiums, or townhouses. And rent stabilization would not apply to deed-restricted units. They are already restricted and limited in terms of the income point. One of the key pieces to this that we're still concerned about within the community is understanding that this is not a rollback or a reduction of rent for stabilized units. It is a prospective basis here for those adjustments. And again, upon vacancy, it allows for base market rent to establish at that point. So next steps, simple, if you introduce today. We would be back May 7th for adoption and second reading. And we would proceed also to the May 7th with a resolution looking at the fee structure for the rent stabilization program. And we are looking at the summer and fall to implement the rent control. Again, one of the critical pieces is making sure we identify the units that this applies to. The second piece of this is setting that maximum annual rental increase for the upcoming year and notifying landlords. And there's a whole host, I'm sure you've read the ordinance, of things that we have to do. So that would conclude my attempt at brevity on a heady subject.
Thank you. Questions?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment more than a question. And that is that this has been a long time coming. I think we have had a very measured, very careful discussion among council members and city staff about how to go ahead and implement this program. It is not a punishment for landlords. And that's a very important statement to make. We are, we do not think that landlords who are treating, and there are many, many of them in this city, who are treating their tenants well, are going to be punished by this. It is a protection for our most needy, for those members of our city here, our neighbors who have been hurt by unfair landlord practices in the past. So I'm thrilled about this and look forward to passing it the next time after we have a second hearing.
Thank you. Any more clarifying questions or comments? No. Actually, I have a comment. And it came to me today. One of the reasons, you know, the city council became interested in passing an ordinance about rent stabilization, rent control, tenant protection, it has to do with a story that I heard today. It's a story that repeats and repeats every so often. I have a, it was a family member, husband, came to see me today having issues with the landlord. Their refrigerator broke. They asked the landlord to replace it. The landlord did not replace the refrigerator. It was a tenant who bought a refrigerator. The stove broke. They asked the landlord to replace the stove. The landlord declined to purchase a new stove. So the tenant purchased the stove. When the tenants went to the landlord with the receipts from the appliances that they purchased for the unit, the landlord replied, "If you don't like it, you can move out. I'm not going to give you a, I'm not going to refund for the appliances you purchased. If there's nothing I'm going to do about it, if you don't like, and he's repeated, "If you don't want to be in my apartment, you can move out." And these are stories that continue to repeat. There's no protection for the tenants. They get threatened by the landlords when they request to fix an appliance or to replace an appliance. And these are families that are renting. So I'm hoping that through this ordinance, we'll be able to provide some peace of mind to the tenants in our community. It was just something I had to share with you about that it was fresh, fresh out of the stove. Thank you. Do we need, do you need anything from us? Public hearing. Thank you. We're going to go to Joanne Rukowski, please.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to greet you and for your work, City Council. So for over two years, you've been hearing members of the ALS Housing Committee and others talking about their need and struggles with housing concerns, inability to find a space, and then the high price to rent a space when it became available necessitating that they share, that families share and crowd together. And you listened. And I am so grateful for that. And I know that members of the community are as well. So tonight, I am really here to listen, listen to this discussion. I do have one question and then one comment. My question is to clarify. I understand that rent control only applies to those units that are not excluded by Costa Hawkins. I get that. But in terms of the tenant protections, am I correct in assuming that that applies to all rental units regardless of whether or not they are covered or excluded by Costa Hawkins? That's my question. And then I have one comment. And that is, I know, expect there will be concerns raised by landlords. And I appreciate Councilmember Reddick's important comment about, excuse me, I misspoke, Councilmember Penrose's comment about that this is not meant to be punitive and only applies in the sense of setting limits to those who have exceeded what they have expected renters to pay and have been, had exorbitant rents. But I would also like to remind landlords that there is a provision for increases in rents on an annual basis and upon change in the renters. And additionally, that by virtue of being a landlord, it means a landlord is an owner and gains equity. And that's something that never happens to a renter. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
John, can you answer Joanne's question, please?
Simple answer, rent control is rent control. You understand that correctly. The tenant protections apply across the board with a few, with very few exceptions.
Thank you, John. We have Bill Hevlin.
Councilmembers, thank you. Thank you for drafting this work. Thank you for pronouncing my name correctly. I have arrived. My name is Bill Hevlin, and I'm a principal lay leader of the Unitarian Universalist Coastside Community, UUCC, here in Half Moon Bay, and a member of Coastside Faith in Action. And I reviewed with interest the draft tenant protections 6.08. And I've compared it to the Resident Bill of Rights published by the California Apartment Association, CAA. As you may recall, CAA sometimes shows up here to speak excitedly on the topic of residential rent. CAA's Resident Bill of Rights forms the framework for my three comments. As you know, in the world of tenants' rights, sub-tenancy is not a small issue on the coast. I am particularly pleased with the definition DD of tenant in Section 11. I am particularly pleased with the definition DD of tenant in Section 6.02.020, which expressly includes subtenants of the residential rental unit. And this lines up with CAA's own Residence Bill of Rights, which without qualification refers to residents. These are the people who reside. So everybody agrees, good job. Two, CAA's Resident Bill of Rights explicitly calls out the issues of contract fairness, owner entrance, maintenance, rent adjustment, and security deposit. I humbly suggest that 6.06 more explicitly call out this issue of security deposit. The California Apartment Association does this with their very brief list of rights, so let's take the hint and do so too. Three, the draft Chapter 6.06 transforms landlord-tenant relationships from the two parties of landlord and tenant to three, landlord, tenant, and city. Or, if you will, from the Wild West to having a sheriff, a new sheriff in town. Speaking of which, those hearing officers in 6.06.110F, my hope is that these guys sometimes just travel to see the property under dispute, just look for themselves. A bias toward walking with a citizen, not inhabiting a desk. Accompaniment, it can make all the difference. Thank you for your attention.
Do we have any closing statements, or do we need anything from us? We are now closing our public hearing. Move on to, oh, we need a motion. May I have a motion, please?
I move that we conduct a public hearing introduced on first reading, an ordinance creating a new Chapter 6.06 titled Residential Rent Stabilization.
May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruddick?
No.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rabeck?
Yes.
Mayor Jimenez?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We now move on to resolutions. Nope, oh, there's two more?
We would like to have had all of these items under one, but it just did not lay out to do that, Mayor.
Can we do that?
So, I, this one will even be less involved, although some questions, comments have come up. But this one, as indicated, is item 2B, and the second piece of the equation being tenant protections, in part driven by what we've heard from the community over and over, which is concerns about behavior of some, I will say some landlords toward their tenants, and just trying to improve tenant landlord relations across the board. Beyond that, we've also noted that commonplace with the adoption of rent stabilization, there are potential problems that can occur, and this also takes care of addressing some of those potentials. So again, I won't reiterate, but this has been a process that started kind of back in November, although it started well earlier than that for us, and for you. But November 7th was the starting point for this current journey. March 19th, you asked that we return with the tenant protections to coincide with the rent stabilization program, and that's why we're here. Again, there are definitions contained within Chapter 6.02. This applies to properties within the city, and as noted in the prior item, this package, while it's intended to focus protections, at least initially on those stabilized units as part of the last ordinance, 6.06, it applies equally to non-stabilized units as well in terms of providing the benefits. And this also works, and meshes together with the existing Chapter 6.10, which used to be related to tenant protections. Now it's basically lease terms. One of the things under, I will say, under those provisions is we see probably a need to come back, and one of the things that we said under the 6.10, which was dealing with the lease terms, was also a desire to have standardized leases themselves. And I do believe that within that, we would cover the issue of statutory state law with regard to deposits and things of that nature. So we are looking to come back in some way, whether it's actually an ordinance revision or not, but we would address the issue of that, although the state is pretty much taking care of limiting that. I think more of that's education to folks than it is about a need for the ordinance to reflect it, but we could discuss that. I won't go through this, but clearly there are at-fault evictions, and this does not change the rules in terms of what an at-fault are, and basically this is violation of many things, including the lease primarily, but other conditions that could apply to that. Quick summary, this applies to both just cause at-fault and no-fault evictions, primarily dealing with the no-fault evictions in most part, but it also requires noticing that doesn't, that is beyond what is necessary under state law. And again, I apologize, there was a carryover there. This, as well as with the rent stabilization, becomes a bit of the program, although it's less of a program because it sort of integrates in with both registration and rent stabilization. And so there will be economies of scale and benefits that are driven by having mutual agreements and contracts with certain folks, including like Peninsula Conflict Resolution Center, for example. But the basis of this, which we talked about the last time through, includes provisions for noticing, includes provisions for three months of rent waiver or relocation assistance in the event of eviction, and provides for, again, multilingual notice and forms, and prohibits harassment, prohibits a landlord from using status or potentially homeland security concerns and issues with that to threaten or to push folks around. Again, next steps, if you adopt tonight, would be to come back on May 7th. We're still working through whether there are fees associated with the tenant protections, but if there are, and we land on that, those would come back on May 7th, and we would continue along with the tenant protections and the tenant and the relocation and all of those things being implemented through and modified. A lot of, a paper trail that we have to deal with in terms of standards and provisions for how are we going to administratively deal with this program and all the programs itself. We have met with Legal Aid Society, and we will also be looking to work with Peninsula Conflict Resolution Center for contracts that would cover their voluntary mediation from Conflict Resolution Center, and Legal Aid would provide assistance to tenants who have issues with, and with their landlords not complying with the rent ordinance. And now to clarifying questions for me or for each other.
Clarifying, I have a question. The story that I had shared with you about the tenants purchasing a new refrigerator, a new stove, ended up being reimbursed by the landlord, and the landlord replying, "If you don't wanna be here, you can leave," would the tenants be protected under this ordinance?
Well, yes, I believe they're protected now without this ordinance because there are clearly state law requirements that you can withhold payment should you give notice to your landlord, they prove not worthy to, or choose not to make those improvements or address those or fix those things. So that's already in statute. This would certainly provide a link to the missing link, I think, which is Legal Aid, frankly, and the relationship that this would bring, would provide them kind of a direct link to them. They're available today, they're there, but I think these tenant protections would be a big piece to that missing link. It also, though, instead of just being a private matter between the tenant and the landlord, and perhaps their attorney, the city does have, does have some role in this and becomes more of the moderator and facilitator to try to address these things. We also can facilitate, hopefully mediation as opposed to litigation on this, and that's another reason that these tenant protections go the next step above that point. But the basics are, state statute should actually fix their issues and deal with it. This helps move that along as well.
As this story continues to repeat, what will be the steps for tenants to follow when things like this happen?
Well, clearly, if, once, assuming this is adopted, and once adopted, I, our sense first and foremost is that this, that the community feels comfortable, for the most part, reaching out to local government. I think there's issues and concerns for, within some, and within some of our residents who have not had the relationship with government, whether here or in their past, and, but have had good contacts and good relationships with local government, mainly the city. And I think they're far more likely to come to us with their questions and concerns and issues. We will be based on adoption of this in a far better place and position to connect those folks with Legal Aid, for example, because we will have them under contract right now. We can give them the phone number, we can tell them to call them, and that's where you should go, but that leaves us out of the mix and not party to the conversation. This ordinance allows us to be party to that conversation, to help link those folks together and to create a relationship that I think will, folks will feel better with, frankly, and more comfortable reaching out and talking.
Thank you, John. Would like to make a comment. I know this happens in our community, so if you know, if it's happening to you, if it's happening to somebody you know, please have them come to City Hall and address this issue that you're having with your landlord. There should be no retaliation, there's protection for the tenant, as is served in California, you heard. And the local government, we are here to help you, but you have to be able to come to City Hall to address this. And you are, you'll receive the help that you need, so please come forward if it's happening to you. Thank you. Thank you, John. Move on to, Joanne, would you like to make a comment on the item? You brought it for all the items, A, B, and C, so, thank, you're welcome, you're good? Thank you. And I believe Bill left. Do we have any comments or clarifying questions? No. May I have a motion?
I move that we conduct a public hearing and introduce on first reading, an ordinance creating a new Chapter 6.08 titled Tenant Protections.
Second. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruddick?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rabeck?
Yes.
Mayor Jimenez?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Close the hearing. Move on to item 2C.
An even shorter item, I promise you. This is item 2C, which is really a cleanup to the Housing Definitions section in new Title VI. As indicated, we would have to come back as we amend and modify and add to Title VI and new chapters so that, that we consolidate housing definitions into one singular place. So this is the result of your introduction of new Chapter 6.06 and 6.08. And again, I don't have to remind you of where we are. And basically, as noted, this will address those defined terms contained within 6.06 and 6.08. And we did provide to you an annotated version, just showed the highlighted for the new terms. So if there's any questions from you or the community, make that easier, we hope, ultimately. How about that? Clarifying questions? Warp speed.
Any clarifying questions? Comments? Joanne, we're good? Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
I move that we conduct a public hearing and introduce on first reading, an ordinance amending Chapter 6.02 title Housing Definitions to incorporate defined terms from proposed new Chapter 6.06 Residential Rent Stabilization and Chapter 6.08 Tenant Protections.
Second. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruddick?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rabeck?
Yes.
Mayor Jimenez?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Close the hearing. We now move on to resolutions and staff reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have just one item tonight. It's a study session on automated license plate readers, and we have our Sheriff's Captain
Okay. Good evening. Before I start, I think everybody knows me at this point, but I'm Captain Rebecca Albin, can't talk tonight. I'm going to be talking about automated license plate readers tonight, and I brought with me a guest star. This is Captain Reif Snyder from the Palo Alto Police Department. Last time that we were here, there was some interest in discussing how they facilitate their program, and so I thought, rather than hearing it from me, why don't we bring somebody from their department? So he's been gracious enough to drive out here and join us tonight. So I'm gonna go through my presentation, and then when I'm done, he can speak about So I'm going to go through my presentation, and then when I'm done, he can speak about how they do things at Palo Alto and answer any questions that you have about their program, and then you can ask me any questions that you'd like about our plans for here, if that works. So with that, let's get started. What do the Automated License Plate Readers, ALPR, look like? Will they show my face? This is a question that has come up, I think, every time that I've been here. For those that don't know, the, I guess it is everybody's right. The picture on the right is what they will look like. It's a solar panel on top that helps fuel the battery that keeps it going, and then the small black thing on the right is the actual Automated License Plate Reader. Will they show my face? The answer is, of course, no. The picture that you see up there is essentially what we see. We have a license plate with the license plate numbers on it, the make and model and color of a vehicle, and essentially, that's what you get. The only other addition could be that, for instance, if you were looking for, say, a black Acura that had been seen involved in a burglary, and the witnesses told you that it had a smiley face bumper sticker on the rear, the capabilities of the system does allow you to search for the make and model and color of the car, and you can check a box that says bumper sticker. So it's not like you could actually search for a smiley face bumper sticker or whatever they told you, but it would give you all the vehicles that match that description that did have a bumper sticker, so you'd still have a ton to look through. But that is just, you know, one additional small thing that you can do with it, but that's the extent of it. Again, unless somebody were hanging out the side of the window, you know, arched backwards or, you know, maybe like a limousine, you know, arched out the front, you're not going to see anybody's face, and we certainly, you know, don't want people hanging out of cars anyway, because that's highly unsafe. So generally speaking, no, no faces, as long as you're driving legally. Protecting privacy is something that's also come up, I think, every time that I've been here. The footage is owned by the agency and city, will not be sold or shared to private entities. This is in our sheriff's office policy, and this is also state law, so you have two checks and balances there. Thirty-day retention period, which we discussed last time, and then the information is deleted. So if any of us in this room happened to cross paths with an automated license plate reader, thirty days from now, our information would disappear like it was never there. And again, that information is simply the make, model, color, and license plate associated with your vehicle. Let's see, what else? Takes human bias out of crime solving by detecting objective data and detecting events that are objectively illegal. So again, you know, the ALPRs are scanning all the license plates that cross their path. It doesn't matter anything, country of origin, how much money you make, male, female, everybody gets collected the same. The data is stored securely in the cloud and end-to-end encryption of all that data. So the way I've been explaining it lately is, if you have a safety deposit box at a bank, think of the bank like the AWS Cloud Flock, they're the bank, but you have the safety deposit box, you have the safety deposit box key. So unless you're going there with your key and deciding to open up your box, the box just lives there. Nobody's going in there, nobody's taking anything, it's just living there. And so that's sort of, it helped me to kind of understand kind of the symbiotic relationship with, even though the data is living in a cloud, the data is essentially the city's data, your data, managed by us, the sheriff's office. Search reason is required for audit trail. Again, as we discussed, there are several ways to make sure, beyond just me promising that we're doing the right thing, that everybody is doing the right thing. When you enter the system, it records your name, it records your reason for looking and what you were looking at, and all of this can be audited. So again, there's many, many checks and balances beyond just our sheriff's office policy and state law to make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. And because I assume it's going to come up, if somebody was found to be doing something other than what they should be doing, they could be criminally liable. So, you know, this is not something that we take lightly. There is definitely a right and a wrong way to handle this information, and if, for some reason, somebody were to ever not do what they were supposed to be doing, then they would be held criminally liable as well as, obviously, have issues internally with violating our sheriff's office policy. This is not facial recognition software, like we talked about. Faces should not be shown in the pictures that are taken, but even if they were, the system wouldn't be able to do anything with it because it doesn't possess the ability to do anything in terms of facial recognition. It's not predictive policing. I don't know how many people have seen Minority Report, but that's basically what this means. It means that we're not going to use the information to proactively do something to you before you've done anything wrong because it's suggested that you could commit a crime. It doesn't work that way. There's no personal information contained in Flock. It's not used for traffic enforcement, these are not red light cameras, and it's not connected to registration data or third-party databases like Carfax or DMV. Again, we're not sharing with private entities, your information is not for sale. Information is not shared with other states or to enforce other state laws, so it's not used for immigration, it's not used to track down people that had, you know, abortions that are illegal in other states, it's not used for any of that, and that is sheriff's office policy and it's California state law. Again, not used for immigration or deportation, Senate Bill 54, if you're interested in reading more about it. And information is not stored or maintained by NICRIC, the Northern California Regional Intelligence Center. This came up last time from the ACLU. Again, it lives in a cloud, we discussed it, I won't belabor the point, but NICRIC does not have a hand in it. That having been said, as the name suggests, NICRIC is a collection of the Northern California law enforcement entities, and they are under the same policies and state laws that we are. And so even if NICRIC were to ask to utilize some of our information, they would be held to the same standard that we are, not sharing with other states, not used for immigration, and not used for reproductive rights, for what it's worth, because I know this came up last time and there was some kind of confusion about maybe what they did or did not do. I believe the mayor last time asked for top offenses reported in Half Moon Bay and perhaps how ALPRs could help us with those things. So I went back three years, we can't do this year because we're in it right now, obviously. But the interesting thing, I thought, when I looked at it, was that if you look at the three years, you kind of have the same crimes, or sort of crimes, some of them are not crimes, just in different orders based on the years, which I found very interesting. But both for '22 and '23, warrants were the number-one reported offense. Warrants often are, we come upon them often when we make car stops, whether it's a low-level warrant, like maybe you have a suspended driver's license and you didn't handle it correctly, and now you have a warrant for driving on a suspended driver's license, in which case you shouldn't be driving anyway, or, you know, something for something more serious or violent, or, you know, any number of things. Often times, the way that we stumble across people that have warrants is when we make a car stop and we run the person's driver's license and it comes up associated with a warrant. So even though it doesn't seemingly seem, obviously, like a license plate device would assist with warrants, it sort of would because oftentimes, the way that we find them is by pulling over cars, or cars associated with other activities, and then it turns out that the occupants of the cars have warrants. Drug paraphernalia kind of speaks for itself. Again, that's often found, you know, on people or in vehicles. And then looking at 2023 DUI, you know, obviously, you have to be in a vehicle to be driving under the influence, so I think that kind of speaks for itself. So my takeaway, looking at this list, is while none of them are, say, stolen vehicle, you know, necessarily, which is a good thing, you know, I think you can make an argument that, especially given the topography of this area, many of the top crimes that we experienced do have an element of them that would involve a vehicle, and therefore, arguably, having an automated license plate reader to assist us in finding that vehicle would be of assistance in stopping some of these, or at least cutting down some of these. Already solving and preventing crimes. As we talked about last time, we do have automated license plate readers on the coast in our unincorporated areas, just not in the city of Half Moon Bay. Ironically, I had planned on telling you that a couple of weeks ago, literally inside of the same week, we had an automated license plate reader indicate a vehicle that had been stolen out of Santa Cruz, maybe Felton, it was Santa Cruz-ish, that, you know, we stopped the car and were able to get the car back to the owners the same day because they came from Santa Cruz, which they're very happy about. And then I think it was either the next day or the day after, same week, we had a, it was indicated to us that an automated license plate reader had told us that there was a vehicle that was stolen out of Oakland, and I won't name the business, but it was located in downtown Half Moon Bay. The occupants were taken out of the car, and there was a stolen illegal firearm loaded that was in the car. And, you know, so my takeaway in this is, had it not been indicated to us by the license plate reader, we would have maybe never known that this car was in our town, let alone in the middle of downtown, with, you know, an illegal loaded firearm, which is certainly not anything anybody wants. And one of the occupants did have a warrant, so that goes to that statistic that we talked about before. The irony is that, just literally a couple of hours ago today, we had a hit on an automated license plate reader. An individual that was from a South Bay city reportedly had told his family that he was going to go kill himself, and there was blood found at his home, and they didn't know where he was. And they had his vehicle information and provided that to that city's police department. It was put into the system because they were trying to find this individual, and the individual was located in San Gregorio here, at the beach, very injured but alive, and we were able to locate that individual, and his family is so grateful, and got him medical attention, and arguably saved a life because he had told his family that he planned to maybe jump off a cliff or drown or something like that. And he was arguably pretty injured of his own device. So I think it's important to stress that while people think of automated license plate readers as a way to find stolen cars, that there's such a nexus to so many other really impactful things that we can use them for and that we are using them for currently around the city, that I think are really worthwhile to take note of. And that just happened literally a couple of hours ago. There's always been the ask for statistics, I think I mentioned this last time. The city of Morgan Hill has a number of license plate readers in their jurisdiction. Since the installation in 2021, officers have used Flock Safety LPRs to make over 200 arrests in connection with almost 700 criminal offenses. And since installing the ALPRs, property crimes have dropped sharply, burglaries are down 36%, and catalytic converter thefts are down 66%. While Morgan Hill is in a different county, these are both crime statistics that we can relate to because we certainly have burglaries here and everywhere has catalytic converter thefts, so I thought it was important to include. South San Francisco, auto burglaries down 80%, motor vehicle theft down 50%, and the number of stolen vehicles entering town down 50%. So again, you know, those are all statistics that I think, you know, we can relate to. Benicia, a community that is similar to ours, in less than two years, Benicia PD's Flock Safety LPRs helped officers arrest 108 suspects, including 10 violent offenders, they recovered 20 illegal firearms, recovered narcotics on 32 separate occasions, they recovered 55 stolen vehicles and arrested 11 suspects accused, again, of catalytic converter theft. It just seems to be something that hits every community everywhere, unfortunately. And then since installing the ALPRs, Benicia experienced a 12% drop in Part I crimes, which are the violent crimes. The next couple of slides included, because these are the locations that, based on calls for service, and, you know, honestly, where the community calls us for incidents the most, made the most sense to start with a pilot program. We talked last time about how the downtown businesses really were interested in the ALPRs, and so we aimed to bookend the downtown business district. And then, aside from that, we looked at what beaches commonly do we have a lot of issues with. And so the next couple of slides are going to be the locations that we identified that made sense with respect to the feedback that was given at the last meeting, as well as, again, the calls for service and where, you know, we felt like we would sort of get the biggest bang for a buck in terms of the ways in and out of town, because, again, we're talking about kind of the, where we're situated on the coast, and how oftentimes, people that come here come from the outside, and they come in cars. And if they do bad things to us, they're going to be leaving in cars. And so we wanted to identify kind of the main arteries that most likely people that were coming would be exiting. So this first slide, as you can see, hopefully, we essentially have the entrance and exit to the Strawflower Shopping Center, and we have the north end of Main Street at Highway 1, so that would sort of cover your north end entrance and exit into downtown, as well as we oftentimes have a number of more commercial crimes that happen at the Strawflower Center, and so this made sense to us. In addition to that, if you look, I guess it is to the right for everybody, we also have Main Street at Highway 92. That intersection is also a major intersection for people, you know, if they're taking 92, that's going to be kind of the first place that they enter downtown, and so we covered that as well. I think that's everything in this slide. This one, close to where we are right now, we have Kelly and 1. There was a, I believe the mayor at last meeting mentioned wanting to make a nexus to schools, so we have one of these looking right where the school district and the middle school would be, as well as, you know, again, we have an entrance and exit, a pretty significant one right there at Highway 1 in Kelly, and so we have that one identified as well. And then on the south side of downtown, by the Coastside Fire District, we have kind of the south end of Main at 1, the other side of the downtown business district by Higgins Canyon Road. Let's see, this one is Redondo Beach, as well as we have the entrance there on Wavecrest Road, Smithfield. As long as I've been here, unfortunately, we've had pretty consistently issues that we've experienced down in the Smithfield area. One of the first things that happened, I want to say, was my first week here, was an unhomed individual that was being harassed by people in a vehicle. I don't remember if it was my first week, but it was when I was brand-new here. And one of the biggest roadblocks that we had with that was trying to find any information about the vehicle that had done that to help this poor person. We didn't have, I don't think we had a license plate necessarily, but, you know, in this instance, the vehicle, when it was done harassing the individual, left, and left down the one way that you could leave. And had we had a license plate reader in that location at that time, we could have looked, because we had a vehicle description, at the date and the time, and we would have been able to probably get the vehicle information and probably solve that, you know, within hours, perhaps. And so I think, in retrospect, we do have instances where having an ALPR could have been a game-changer, absolutely, and that one sticks with me, I think, just because it was such a major thing to happen when I had just started here. And again, we have Redondo Beach as well. We talked about the beach access, the beaches that are most frequently accessed, not only by people that live here, but people that come here, and often the people that come here are the ones that sometimes do bad things. And then we talked about Poplar Beach. Again, I don't have to tell, everybody here probably knows, the holiday weekends and the summers, Poplar Beach is very well-attended, I'll say, during the night and the day. And one of the big complaints that we got over this past summer that we couldn't do very much about was when the people that lived in the area of Poplar Beach said people were driving erratically, they were speeding down my street, you know... were driving erratically, they were speeding down my street, you know, things of that nature. And there's not a lot that we could do about it in retrospect. Had we had ALPRs in that area, if somebody said this car was driving erratically, you know, maybe they hit and ran a parked car or something like that, again, we could put that information to use and we could probably find out who did it. And so we identified Poplar Beach as another location that we thought this made sense. I've included this because Flock offers a transparency portal to anybody that utilizes our services. This is South San Francisco's. I can't show you ours because we don't have one yet, but if we did have one, it would look just like this. And the reason I'm including it is it's something that is up to us if we want it or not, but I think that we would absolutely want it because this is the kind of transparency that we all talk about. This is something that anybody can access on the internet. Theoretically, if this moves forward, they'd be able to Google Half Moon Bay Flock. And this gets updated every day, if not by the minute. And it speaks to everything that I think a lot of people are very concerned about. It identifies the prohibited uses. It talks about the hot list policy. I know there were questions about the hot list. It talks about what databases are included in the hot list. So for South San Francisco, and this is pretty standard amongst all departments because I looked at a lot of these. The California SBS is the stolen vehicle system. NICMCC is for Missing and Exploited Children and Amber Alerts. And these are systems that are automatically populating their databases, information into the hot list. And then the administrators for the department have the ability to add vehicles, like what happened today. The South Bay Agency, knowing they had a vehicle associated with somebody that was potentially suicidal, was able to add that vehicle information into the system. The administrator for that agency had the ability to do that. And that was why they were able to search the system and find that it had been indicated by an ALPR here on the unincorporated coast. And so that's kind of how that works. It talks about how many hits were in the last 30 days, how many searches were in the last 30 days, the data retention policy. And again, this is updated constantly and anybody, anywhere, any of you can look at this at any time. And so I really like this. Again, it's something that we can or cannot do. I've seen that most agencies do do it and it seems like it's consistent with everything that all of us want because it's putting all the information out there for everybody to see. So I would be very in favor of us doing this. It also talks about external organizations with access. So something that we talked about last time was who's going to access our information? The only people that are going to access our information are people that are in the state. I was speaking with the director of NICRIC the other day and I said, you know, last time it came up that people kind of are uneasy about your, what you're doing over at NICRIC. And he said, you have to understand, we are under the same state laws as the local police departments. We can't use it for immigration. We can't use it for reproductive rights issues. We can only share with the state of California because just like you, these are state laws. And there was some reason I was bringing that up. I can't remember what it was now. Oh, organizations with access. So some departments, including the sheriff's office, to be honest, can set it where maybe law enforcement agencies within 100 miles automatically have access. But that's a choice. So for us, if we move forward, we can say, we don't want to automatically give anybody access, where every time that an agency wants access, it has to go through an administrator. And that administrator could be me. Doesn't have to be like somebody at the sheriff's office for everybody. And whatever limitations we want to put on our automated license plate reader program here do not have to be the same as they do in, say, Woodside or San Carlos. Again, this will be the city moving forward with this. We will just be the administrators. And so whatever we decide together that we want to be how we move forward with it is how we will move forward with it. So we don't have to automatically let anybody have it necessarily. The reason that I brought up NICRIC is because he was telling me that they've had times where law enforcement in other states will try to use, you know, come in and ask for permission to use the system and it will not allow them. Because their identifying information is from outside the state of California, they couldn't get it if they wanted to. And so similarly, we have those, you know, same protections here where it is just with the state. And if our comfortability is that we want to look at every agency on a case-by-case basis and decide, look at their policies and decide if it's in line with ours, which largely most of them are pretty consistently at this point, because the state law doesn't really give any wig over them. It says, you shall not do this, you shall not do that. We can do that. If we want to say like any agencies in San Mateo County automatically can have access, we can do that. But that's cart before the horse, just something to think about. Yes, this was one thing that we changed in the version that we don't have. I broke this down for you in the other version, but basically what it comes down to is the reoccurring cost in ensuing years, or for year two in this case, because we're talking about a two-year pilot, is $48,000. Again, this is different than the one that I had, but I believe it breaks down to $3,000 per ALPR. And then for the first year, it's a little bit more, it comes to $60,900 because there is some costs associated with the installation, one-time costs. Two of our ALPRs are in locations that are on, I believe it's Highway 1. And there is a slightly higher cost if you're deploying them on Caltrans right-of-ways. And it takes a little bit longer because there's more steps to go through if you're going through with Caltrans, as we all know Caltrans here. There's many more steps to go through in bureaucracy to get those done versus locations that are city or county owned, which are less money because they're simpler. And so we purposely tried to identify locations, plan locations that were city or county rather than Caltrans, both for monetary reasons and for time reasons. And so the grand total for two years would be 108,900, which is the $60,900 for the first year plus the $48,000 for the second year. The reason it makes sense to do a two-year contract versus one is that two years locks us into that price. I'm sure we've all seen, I brought an article, Oakland, I believe, just got 480 automated license plate readers, that's their pilot. And so if we do one year, if Flock decides next year, because things are going well, that they're going to raise the prices, then our prices get raised. If we do the two-year, then the price that it is now will be our price for as long as we're doing business with Flock and will never change. And so that is why I think it makes sense fiscally to do a two-year pilot and that would be the combined cost is 108,900. Oh, this is a very old version of this. Okay. This is what I already discussed. Yeah, this is a couple of versions old. Irregardless, I can't remember what the last slide originally was supposed to be.
I think it was just asking questions.
It was to talk about the COPS grant.
Oh, the funding, yes.
The most important thing is that we have enough money in reserve in our COPS grant, which we put in for year after year, and we're very frugal with using. And so we actually have a good amount of money saved up in that. We have more than enough to cover it for two years, really for four years. And so even though that is the listed cost, technically speaking, it will not cost us or the community or the city anything because it will be fully grant funded. And there will still be more than enough money in that collection of grant funding to do any number of other community projects that, you know, we may want to do. So again, I apologize, we had a slightly different version of this presentation, but that was what it would have been. So with that, if it's okay with you all, I know I'm a little long-winded, I apologize. I'd like to pass it off to our visitor from Palo Alto, so he can talk a little bit about what Palo Alto does and should you have any questions for him? And then we're both here for any questions anybody has.
All right, is that working now?
You want mine?
No, mine.
Okay. Can you hear me though?
No.
Okay.
Here, just switch with me.
Okay. All right, now we're cooking with gas. Okay. Got it. All right. As Captain Albin said, my name is James Reif-Schneider. I'm a captain with the Palo Alto Police Department. Captain Albin reached out to me, I think because there was some interest in the process by which we got our program off the ground back in 2023. Just for a little bit of background, we had, we got our council approval for the purchase and the initiation of our Flock program in April of 2023. It did take us some time for a variety of reasons to get those cameras all installed. So we've actually been fully live since late summer of 2023, so we're not quite yet at a 12-month period. So I don't come with stats in hand, I come more with anecdotal information for you and prepared to answer any questions you might have. One thing I'll just say briefly is that when I did talk to Captain Albin about how y'all got to this point in the process, I saw a lot of similarities between what we did in that our city and our city council wanted to take a very thoughtful approach to evaluating the use of the cameras, what restrictions were appropriate, and ultimately did, you know, did any cons of this outweigh the obvious pros? I'll add that I don't know here whether this community has a surveillance use ordinance, Palo Alto does. So we had some specific hoops to jump through in order to evaluate the intrusiveness of the technology and justify its use. And specifically, the ordinance requires the council to make a determination that the benefits of the technology outweigh any of that intrusiveness. So that's the standard our council applied in approving the program. We did some community meetings, we did a study session with our council somewhat similar to this. We also met with representatives of the ACLU, which I understand the captain did as well, so very similar in that respect. A lot of the same restrictions and controls that I heard described and I saw in the staff report are very similar to what we have in place in terms of 30-day retention period for the data. Within the industry, that's on the very low end of the retention period. Many agencies across the nation keep data as long as indefinitely or as much as, you know, multiple years. So we settled on 30 days as being useful to us in terms of an investigative tool, but not unnecessarily retaining what I'll refer to as innocent data. So you're just driving down the road and your license plate was captured. When I spoke to our council a year ago, there were really sort of three ways in which I anticipated the technology would be useful. And I think I can report that it has done all three of those things. The most obvious, of course, is your real-time alerts to stolen vehicles, stolen plates, missing people, vehicles or plates that are reported to have been involved in a felony, so they're wanted for that reason. And we have seen an uptick anecdotally in the number of those vehicles that we're seeing and arrests being made, vehicles being recovered, stolen plates being recovered, et cetera. Perhaps less obvious are what I'm going to refer to as the chaseaways, which is you get an alert that there's a stolen vehicle at such and such an intersection. Well, that's only half of the game, right? Because you get there, one of my patrol officers gets there, finds the car, well, we still need to stop the car, right? And so if the car doesn't want to stop and we elect not to pursue the vehicle, on the one hand, you could consider that a loss in the moment because we didn't make the arrest or recover the stolen vehicle. But in our book, that's a victory, maybe a lesser victory. And the reason I say that is that, as the captain alluded to, a lot of people are coming from outside our community to commit crimes in Palo Alto and they frequently do that in stolen vehicles or vehicles with stolen license plates to obscure their identity. So best-case scenario is we find those vehicles, we make the stop, we make the arrest. That's best-case scenario. But in my opinion, one step below that, but still a success, is we deter them from offending in Palo Alto by finding them soon after their arrival in town. They see us, they leave, they don't have a chance to offend. So we have seen that as well. And the last is obviously investigative benefit. I can tell you that we've had countless cases of all kinds of varieties, whether it's your organized retail theft type cases, whether it's stolen vehicles, whether it's robberies or residential burglaries. We've solved a number of each of those types of cases directly as a result of evidence that was developed through Flock. So, and those are cases where I can't say for certain we wouldn't have solved them without Flock, but Flock certainly gave us a leg up, I can tell you that. On the sharing end of data, as was alluded to, our council elected to go the route of considering requests to share our data on an individual agency basis. So we don't automatically share our data with any subset of agencies by proximity or et cetera. We require individual inquiries from individual agencies and we consider those inquiries individually. For the most part, our litmus test is we look at their policy to make sure that it's similar to ours so that we know the data's being used responsibly. We also generally restrict our sharing to Greater Bay Area agencies with the idea that those are the agencies that have a real nexus to Palo Alto. The last thing I'll just say is that we have been doing a regular kind of quality control check on the use of the data, both by our officers and also by users outside our agency making inquiries that yield our data. And we've been very pleased to date with the compliance with policy, et cetera. So I'll stop there and just ask if I can be of any help and answer any questions you might have.
Do we have any questions? Questions? Yes, for clarification, you know, we talked about information being in the cloud, you know, and some of us, you know, are a bit on the, not knowing what that means. Can you please explain to us what does it mean when information is stored in the cloud for 30 days?
Yeah, absolutely.
And who can access that information?
Yeah, I will give you an answer so much as I can speak to it. And then we do have somebody from Flock that is available on the Zoom that can give you a more technical answer. But for my level of understanding, or lack thereof, in terms of technical prowess, just like any other information, because the cloud is used for all kinds of things now, backing up your iPhone or your emails or anything, again, as I discussed, that idea with the safety deposit box in the bank. And so the information is stored in the cloud. The level of security is the same as, you know, your bank information or any other privacy information that you would want securely stored. And after 30 days, that information is poof, gone, like it was never there in the first I'm not sure beyond that, like from a layman's perspective, how much more I can explain. So I'd really like to defer to the representative from Flock. Do we have him on the Zoom? Hector?
Hi, this is Hector. Can you all hear me?
Very well.
Yes, we can hear you.
So thank you for the question, council member. A little bit of background on just the data and how it's stored. Each image has what is called a time-to-live stamp, which means that at the 30-day mark, it will be hard deleted and no longer retrievable. So it's important to kind of start with that kind of piece of information as to kind of the timeframe in which your data exists. The second portion that's important for the public and for yourself to know is that, you know, there is no DMV records or third-party databases within Flock. All right? So the images that are being captured are images of the back of vehicles and their license plates. Now, as far as storage, all of the data is end-to-end encrypted, 256-bit encryption specifically. 256-bit encryption specifically. And it is stored in AWS, Amazon Web Server's government cloud, which, as you may know, is kind of highest level of, you know, type of servers for this type of information. And then as a company, we are sought to compliant. And then we're always happy to, you know, have one of our folks from our project management team speak to your IT team if necessary.
Mayor? I can speak at a fifth-grade level, and that might be helpful as well.
Please do.
Basically, what it boils down to when you talk about the cloud is historically, people had servers. They had computers that were onsite. Like, the city would have a server where information was stored. That is not the case anymore. Everything, almost everything is stored in the cloud. In this case, Flock, who manages the information for us, they rent space on a server somewhere else that's managed by AWS. And it sounds like it's the government version of it, which is more protected, which means we just don't have the data here. It's stored somewhere else and we have access to it. And as he said, it's very high-level encryption, which means it's scrambled in a way that even if people could access it, they necessarily couldn't understand what was being stored. So it's just not our information sitting here. It's being stored by someone else who can actually probably store it more safely and more effectively than we can.
Thank you. Captain Albin, you commented that the person who manages this information or supervises this information is up to the person to decide if somebody, if an agency requests this information to be able to share that information with this agency. So it's pretty much up to the script of this person supervising this information to share the information, correct?
I think so, yes.
So that means if a person who might be biased against immigrants would be a possibility to share this information with immigration services?
Well, I mean, no, for a couple of reasons. One, again, our, if you mean the person, you mean like a member of law enforcement, yeah? Okay. So first of all, we shouldn't be hiring anybody like that in the first place. We have extensive hiring practices, including backgrounds and psychs. And I hope that, you know, no member of law enforcement anywhere, especially the sheriff's office, but anywhere, has that. And if they do, then they don't belong in this job. Separate from that, our policies prohibit that. Our sheriff's office policy that has been made available to all of you. Again, as we talked about, state law prohibits that. So it would be a criminal act to do that. And then beyond that, we do have several layers of redundancy. First of all, as we discussed earlier, you can't see faces with the vehicles. And so there would be no way at random to, you know, be picking on immigrants or anybody else, for that matter, because you can't see who's in the vehicle. And, you know, if you were inclined to do that, you wouldn't need a license plate reader to do that if you had such ill intent. You could, I mean, you'd be breaking lots of laws. But if you were so inclined to do that, there are many other databases as a member of law enforcement you have access to. But again, you'd be going to prison, essentially. So again, you can't see faces in the information that's captured. Our policy prohibits it, state law prohibits it. And then within the Flock system itself, every person that goes in, it has an audit trail. So it tracks who you are, it tracks why you're in the system, how long you're in the system, what you're looking for, who you looked at. And so, you know, if, in some parallel universe, this were to happen, it would be very easy to prove that the person did it. And, you know, firing would be the least of their worries because, again, they'd be looking at criminal charges. I hope that answers, does that answer the question?
Yes. Councilmember?
I seem to remember reading Palo Alto's paperwork on the ordinance that actually you enter into an agreement with the cities with whom you share the data. So it's actually, it's not something that happens randomly, you know, on the fly, but that you have agreements with particular cities, written agreements. Is that correct?
Yes, so if someone wants to access data that was captured by Palo Alto's cameras, and by someone, I mean another law enforcement agency, they can do that in one of two ways. If they have a very specific inquiry, say, I'm investigating, I'm a detective at Mountain View Police Department investigating a homicide, I can either submit a written request to Palo Alto Police Department saying I'm a detective with Mountain View Police Department, here's my letterhead, here's my badge number, et cetera. Here's the case number that I'm investigating, here's the case type I'm investigating, and here's the specific license plate that I want you to search for during this specific time period. And our detective supervisor is entitled to accept that request, vet it, and then perform the request and share data with that other detective the same way we share all kinds of investigative data with other agencies. That would be for sort of a one-off request. If, on the other hand, an agency says, I don't want to have to come to you each time I have an individual inquiry. I want your data to be available to me on an ongoing basis, then yes. We only do that with specific agencies, which we've approved on a geographic basis and after having looked at their policies. And in addition, we require them to sign an individual MOU at the management level that their agency will not misuse the data, will not use it for these purposes, these purposes, these purposes.
Any more questions? We're going to move on to public forum. Paul Grikoryev?
Wow, that was a lot of information. Certainly a lot that I have never heard before. So this session has been very helpful. I sent you members of the council and city manager and clerk copies of a comment I was prepared to make. I just heard a whole bunch of information from Captain Albin that I had no knowledge of. And so some of my questions have been answered. Some of them remain. Because while it's helpful to have a verbal confirmation, I'd like to see, and I recommend to the council that it ask to see a lot of this in writing and that be contractually bound to whomever is the responsible party in that case. I have a couple of quick questions. Whose demonstration is this? Is this a demonstration of Flock? Or of the Sheriff's Department? Or of the city? Who's running the demo? Whose demo is it? Who's legally responsible for the information and operation of the license plate readers? Does anybody know? Well, we ought to answer that question before we go very much further. What number of ALPRs of readers are we proposing for this pilot test? Does anyone know the answer to that question? We ought to make very sure about that. I seem to think there were 16 readers reading the staff report. But it may be two times that, one looking each way? Do you know? Nobody knows. Well, we ought to find out how many readers that we're talking about. And again, I mentioned to the council, and with apologies to the captain, that none of these slides were visible to the public. We couldn't tell where the license plate readers were to be located because we couldn't read the maps. We couldn't read any of the slides or any of the fine print. So as far as the public is concerned, I think your knowledge just didn't get through to us. I wish it had. I'll just basically hit a couple of high points of my original comment in which I recommended that the city not proceed with demonstration or acquisition of fixed automated license plate readers for use within our borders unless and and until we can satisfy ourselves that the data collected by such technology will be, A, maintained in a secure manner. It sounds like that's the case, but I'd like to see it in writing and understand it. B, not routinely... May I finish this?
Yes, go ahead, please.
B, not routinely, be routinely shared with organizations or individuals other than the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office and its trained, authorized personnel. And C, cannot be acquired by any agency or individual seeking to use it as part of an investigation, apprehension, or prosecution of any woman seeking or obtaining abortion-related drugs or services or anyone aiding such efforts. And as you'll see when you read my comment in detail, we now have our largest neighboring state, Arizona, who has declared abortion to be a crime, a criminal offense. And there are probably 2 million women now who are neighbors, many of whom may be seeking services in the state of California because they are simply not going to be available in our largest neighboring state. Incredibly to me. I would ask the council to take a look at the comments I sent around by email earlier and the city manager, and I won't take your time with them now. And I thought the presentation was great. I wish I could understand more of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Crystalin?
Crystalin with the Coastside Chamber advocating on behalf of the system. Some of the public did understand the presentation. And if I have it correctly, I believe the city owns it, the sheriff manages it, and Flock is the equipment and software. And knowing that the city would be the steward of the program and you guys have proven time and again that you care very much about the community and all of its members and trying to do your best to have fair policies, I fully believe that you guys would come up with a system in conjunction with the sheriff's recommendations and what other cities are doing to come up with policies that are fair and usable. As mentioned in the last report, at the last report, I worked in Carmel at the time where a retail theft ring from LA was caught thanks to a license plate reader. And then hearing the story today about the gentleman who was having a life crisis and it was able to help him, I think, to the point of Captain Albin, the fact that it does not show faces and it's not based on anything other than your car, which is one of the things that we use the most in our daily lives, but is not, you know, attached to us, it's not us as a person, I think is a great entryway into helping fight crimes. Crime is slowly increasing. And if anybody watches the California Legislature, they're doing a lot about retail theft. Retail theft in particular has just really become a big problem. And thankfully, our downtown has not experienced a ton of retail theft, especially ones where they break in through a window. But it is experiencing it more and more. We had one, we have one shop on Main Street that's had people steal things from their shop almost once a quarter. And so things, but they can, with their camera, they can help identify some key markers. And then with the help of others, they can try to find the people, but it doesn't always work. So having one more tool in our belt that does not identify people, I think would be a very good thing for our downtown merchants. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers?
We have a Zoom comment.
One more?
Kimberly Williams?
Hi, this is Kimberly. Thank you for taking my questions. I have two things. I do have some concerns about these. I'm a little bit on the fence, but I will tell you, I had, something happened to me a few years ago in which I had parked on the side of the road in a legal place to walk out to view a meteor shower in a public park. And a police officer ran my tag. And when I came back to my car, proceeded to tell me where I lived, who the name of the person I lived with was, and a lot of other very personal details in the guise of trying to figure out if the car was actually mine. So there is a lot, there are a lot of things that, from a tag, a police officer or any other person can learn about you as an individual. And that's troubling to me, although I don't know how we can avoid that in the way that we're tracked today. I just learned that the Transportation Authority is tracking our trips by our cell phones. Even though it's anonymous data, they're doing this regularly. So that was eye-opening. The other things I want to, actually are questions that I have that I want to raise that are kind of different. And that is, can these be used to read front plates? And if they can, similar to when you cross the Bay Bridge, it would capture your face. And then I'd like to know how these, you know, if these are installed in a place where they can't be affixed to something that's already there, what is the installation? What does that involve? And are they easily movable? Do they have external lighting attached to them? Or do they require a certain level of lighting that would interfere with dark-skY compliance? And how are they maintained? So thank you.
Carlisle Anne Young?
Thank you. I have been long in favor of these for catching the criminals that steal cars and they break into people's pickup trucks and steal hard-working individuals' tools. And I think they just recently... Oh, I'm sorry, it said it was unmuted. Anyway, so also, all the new toll lanes on 101, check your license plate and bill you that way. And I went to the Planning Commission hearing about Mid-Penn. And I saw one of the sheriff's cars parked behind me. And he had one on his rearview mirror. But it was, of course, I don't know, I think it faces forward. I'm not sure about that. But they're mobile in that the community officers using them can drive around and, you know, check somebody, you know, a crime in progress. But I think it's important to keep our community safe. And I'm not at all worried about somebody catching me going down to the Happen Bay Feed and Fuel and buying food for my goat or something like that. I mean, so be it if they happen to catch me while I'm running an errand. But every town almost on the entire peninsula has them in some place or another. So if you're really paranoid about it, you'll never want to leave your house ever again. And at the last meeting I attended, somebody said they have them at the gatehouse at Ocean Colony. So, you know, they're all over the place. We just don't really realize that we're being surveilled. And one time, I made a phone call into 911. Maybe I called the Happen Bay Police way back when. And I said, well, do you want my address or my name or something? And he goes, oh, we know who you are. So they must have a database system already of everybody, from cell phones to, you know, license plates and everything. So it's kind of like, not to be worrying about something that's already happened. Thank you.
Councilmembers?
Thank you very much, Captain Albin. I think since you've been here, we're very impressed with how fewer crimes are going on. There's this hysteria that the crime rate is increasing. The reality is, it's not. My question is not about these actual ALPRs, but what we could do with $110,000 to actually improve safety in our community. I can think of things like school resource officers, more... more deputies directing traffic at busy intersections during weekends in the summer, things that really make a difference about crime. I'm not so sure that these license plate readers, which read everybody's license, is really going to be the best way to spend $110,000. So although I appreciate everything you've done for our community and I'm grateful, I'm not going to support ALPRs in our city. Thank you.
Council member Riddick.
Yes, I would like it if you could answer Kimberly Williams' questions about, do they read the front plates? How are they maintained? The lighting issues? I think that would be good to get out there this time.
Yeah, absolutely. So the picture that I showed at the beginning is what you see. That's why on the maps, I apologize if not everybody saw them clearly. At some intersections, we had cameras that were going one way of traffic or the other one because they're focused on the rear plate, which I believe was her question. Lighting is not an issue. No, they don't have lights on them. I'm trying to remember what else she asked.
She asked about where there'll be a fix. I'll share that in the analysis and planning for this, Captain Albin met with Mosfozakini, our Public Works Director, and he helped identify locations where we wouldn't have to build new infrastructure, put in new infrastructure. So these would be affixed on existing poles where there's electrical, well, not electrical connections, but access to whatever is needed to make these operate properly. Certainly, we could move them if we needed to. I think there'd be a cost associated with that. But if we move forward with this and we decide that a location isn't giving us the data we need, it can be moved and relocated to another location. And then there was a question about maintenance. You know, I think maintenance, it's a fixed piece of electronics, unless there's problems with it. And I know Hector from Flock is still on and he can unmute himself. And it may make sense to ask him to answer that question.
Sure, yeah, I don't mind deferring to Hector. Hector, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, so Flock is a software as a service model. So we will actually install and maintain all of the cameras for the city. So there was no, you know, staff time dedicated to upkeep or anything like that. We have our own technicians that would go and maintain them.
Councilor Riddick.
Can I finish?
Yes, of course.
Thank you. The question was raised about putting things in writing. So I guess my question would be like, what is the next step? If we say, yes, let's move forward on a pilot program, what sort of documents will memorialize our agreements? Will they come back to the council again at a public meeting? How's that going to work?
I can answer that if you don't mind. You know, if we're directed to move forward with this, there's a couple of things that need to happen. We'll finalize, the city will enter into the contract with Flock for these units. I believe some of the things that we've talked about tonight will be addressed in that contract with them. And I think we've learned a lot. I really appreciate Captain Reif Schneider coming and joining us tonight. Probably a lot of other things you'd rather be doing tonight, but really, really having somebody that's got experience with it in a community that shares some of our values, I think is really, really helpful. And I think what I've taken away is we need to explore whether or not we should have our own surveillance use ordinance. We have a camera ordinance for video surveillance, but I think this is a little bit more broad. I like the idea of having a written process for how we evaluate when and how we share data. And I think probably a lot of that we can just take right from what Palo Alto has done. And then I really liked what I heard about the quality control process for really auditing what's happening. If it's true pilot, we need to set some standards and evaluate to those standards. And I think if we're directed tonight to come back with this, I think that all comes together at a future meeting where you all can make a decision and approve all of that at once. So you know exactly what we're doing, what we're guaranteeing. And of course, the county has its own ALPR use policy that I think takes a lot of best practices from cities like Palo Alto. But we can evaluate those. I'll also share, just because it came up before, we've met with the ACLU on this issue. They spoke at our last meeting. I've had some contact with them over the last week. And they're going to review the updated county policy and make any other recommendations that they think would apply to our city. Although I think they're going to mimic what is already happening out there because they are best practices. So I think there's a package of documentation. I definitely agree. It's one thing to say this is how it's going to work. Let's put it in writing and set some guidelines about how we're going to manage it and audit it and really make sure that this is truly effective for our community.
Thank you. I'm in favor of moving forward in that fashion. Thanks.
Councilor Brunstone.
Yeah, just a couple of quick clarification questions. So we mentioned that we can restrict requests from anyone we want. So I assume we can put into writing, we would reject any requests from the state of Arizona pursuing someone who had an abortion in a criminal investigation, correct?
Yeah, I mean, it's already in, I mean, we can put it in writing. But it is in writing because it's in our sheriff's office policy that we will not use this for reproductive rights issues. We will not use it for immigration issues. And it references the state law that also prohibits us from sharing with other states. So it is in writing, but I'd be happy to put it in more writing.
And any other situations similar to that? We can always adapt.
Absolutely.
The guidelines about what kind of requests we accept or not. The other, yeah, I wanted to address my fellow council member, Rarabak's thoughts about, well, we could put this money towards other safety, safety solutions. And you mentioned more police in the schools, right? I think was one of the things. So, and maybe there are other suggestions. So first of all, when we're talking about more police in the schools, I would think that would be a school district issue to come up with and pay for. And I don't even know if cops grants apply to that. The other solutions you mentioned, I don't know if the cops grants apply to those other solutions. Secondly, this is a two-year pilot that would be, we're not putting out any of money. It's a two-year pilot that will be completely paid for, oh, sorry, by cops grants, which is basically free. Could have just started with that, the cost. But so it's free, which gives us the opportunity to see what the impact is and what sort of things are resolved because of use of these cameras. That's the purpose of a pilot. So in that regard, you know, I would support this program. And I think we've done a lot of due diligence. City of Palo Alto is a very progressive city with a progressive council. And it's very concerned about privacy rights and protecting constitutional rights. And so I think we're fortunate that other cities up and down the peninsula, I think, have done a lot of due diligence and were able to actually use some of their information and also the kind of regulations and documentation they put in place. So I think we're relatively good to go in that regard. And that's why I would support this.
Councilor Peralos.
Yeah, I want to thank you, Captain Albin. You have been very thorough in your presentation and very clear. And also Sheriff from Palo Alto, I can't, I don't want to mispronounce your name.
What? Reif Schneider.
Reif Schneider. Thank you for coming and taking the time to explain what's going on in Palo Alto. I was initially against this program. And after careful consideration, and that's, I've been considering it now for a couple of weeks. I was asked to do an interview on KHMB radio about it. And so I spoke with Captain Albin and she was very kindly, gave me a lot of information that helped me in that interview. As a pilot, I am for the program. I cannot say that I want the ALPRs in my town for the rest of the millennium. I can say that it's worth a two-year pilot program. I would also like to make a point that Councilmember Riddick had made to me earlier when we were talking about it. And that is, if Palo Alto has them and Redwood City has them and Pacifica has them and we don't, guess who becomes the target? So it, even if it's a way of preventing us from becoming a target, I think it's worth a two-year program. I do think that our city staff, as well as the sheriff's office, are going to do a very good job at monitoring it and helping to reassure the public that this is not Big Brother looking into your personal information and dispensing that information where there are real strict, clear limits on how the information that's garnered, which is the rear end of your vehicle with its license tag and whatever bumper stickers you have. That's all that's going out there. And I'm willing to go ahead and give it a shot.
My turn. Thank you for the presentation. You know, by looking at the report of the crime reports for the last three years, I don't really see a need of the cameras. Warrants, I don't think they will benefit from having cameras, you know, license plate readers in our community. You know, I know the Sheriff's Department has done an excellent job in our community, keeping us safe. The rapid response when there is something happening, protecting our community. And you know, by just looking at the reports, I mean, I don't, I don't see a need. I'm still, my concern is not about the images, you know, of faces, you know, facial recognition because the cameras will not do that. Even if they do a facial recognition of a front plate of a vehicle and take a picture of the person. My concern is when the wrong person is driving the vehicle. You know, that is my concern. Where at the last meeting, we had a presentation for the mistaken identity of the driver. Vehicles do change hands. If a vehicle is reported to be in a crime, in a robbery, a shooting, a hit and run, and the vehicle within a month is sold or is being driven by a different person, the person driving the vehicle would be responsible. And that is my concern. You know, I'm not concerned about, like I say, you know, the images of the front plate of the faces. But it's about the wrong person driving the vehicle when he gets pulled over after he's been identified. And that's my concern. And I don't think, you know, Happen Bay, I, you know, I understand, you know, we have had some burglaries in our, you know, our community. But I didn't see that on the report. You know, the top crimes, I didn't see that there. It was not shown about retail stores being broken into. If there would have been something else on those reports that would tell me we do need, you know, cameras, license plate readers in our community, then I would go for the pilot program. You know, I think a pilot program is a good thing. You know, we, I've been trying it out to see how it changes, it reduces crime in our community. I know it was presented by you at our last meeting and it's shown in other communities where license plate readers have been implemented. You know, the reduction of crimes, of specific crimes. But even law enforcement, I'm not really sure if it was the cameras that made the change, that made the difference. It was just a fact that the, the community knew that the cameras were there. And that could be one of the things. I'm sure the information would not be shared with anybody with another, any groups. And that's not my concern about sharing information. My concern is, again, is about the wrong person driving the vehicle that has been identified in a, in a crime.
Can I speak to that?
Of course, please do.
So it's a valid concern. Something I brought up last time that we were here is I described the automated license plate readers as another tool in our tool belt. And, you know, I'm not going to sit here and say that it's impossible to pull over a vehicle with the wrong person in it. It is certainly possible. Regardless if we have automated license plate readers or not, that could still happen. Some of the people, I think, that called in on Zoom talked about a lot of different things. They talked about, you know, experiences where a member of law enforcement had run their license plate and gotten all this personal information about them, which we do have access to as members of law enforcement. That's why it's so difficult to get into this field. It takes so long and the background checks and everything else because we are given a certain level of responsibility that should not be given to just anybody. And so I would say that, you know, regardless of automated license plate reader or not, that could happen. That having been said, we pull over cars all the time. We work 24/7. We have four shifts, as you know. We have very active, proactive deputies out here on the coast, which I love. I'm not pushing them to work. They love working. They're never in the station because they're out working to everybody's benefit, if you ask me. And there is always the chance that that could happen because these systems that I referenced earlier, the stolen vehicle system. Anytime your car gets stolen, the information gets entered into the state system. And anybody, anywhere could run this plate and make a match using the stolen vehicle system. Nothing to do with automated license plate readers. Same thing with, you know, a crime that just happened. And we put out a description and say, you know, it was a red Mazda with, you know, two men or maybe a man and a woman. And then five minutes later in that area, one of the deputies sees a red Mazda with two people and pulls them over. Sometimes it's not the people. It just happens to be that they have a similar description and they were in the area. We all know this. Irregardless, ALPRs or not, these incidents are handled the same. If we believe that the individuals in the vehicle are said to be armed and dangerous or have done something, you know, a high level of criminality, we would generally deploy a felony car stop. We stay back behind our cars. We would likely have our guns out. We would call the individuals out. And if these are not the people, you know, yes, they would probably be scared and they would come out and they would do everything that we say and they would be detained. And we would figure out that it was not them and we would apologize and we would send them on their way. This is not usually what happens. Generally speaking, when we have information that suggests that a vehicle is associated with a crime and we find the vehicle, most times that is the vehicle. But like I said, I've never lied to you as long as I've been here. I'm not going to start today. ALPRs or not, that scenario could happen. And in small percentages of times, it does happen. And that's why it's so important to do your checks and balances, to make sure, like I talked about last time, if you have a license plate and there's a license plate frame, it could be an E or it could be an F, you know, things like that. You need to be very, very conscious and careful with decisions that you make because we make decisions that have gravity, that do affect people. And so to your point, whether we move forward with the pilot or not, that scenario could happen, not for any malintent, just because it could happen through, you know, any number of factors. Does it usually happen? No, it doesn't. But it could in small percentage, regardless of moving forward with the automated license plate readers or not. Because again, we do have many systems with lots of information. We do conduct car stops all the time. I'm not sure if that speaks to the point that you were making, but.
Actually, I think it speaks in my favor. Yeah, but you know, thank you for, you know, for that. Because, you know, that is my concern. I know it's happened, you know, I read several incidents. Somebody shared with me different reports. you know, you know, I read several incidents. Somebody shared with me different reports that were the license plate readers have been implemented. And it's scary, you know. So I don't think I'm, I don't think I'm ready, you know, to implement this system in our community. But I would, I'm interested in learning more in how we can have, you know, answer the questions, who's going to be responsible, who's going to be able to share the information, who's going to manage the information. And maybe then, maybe we can always bring it back. You know, we can always bring it back about implementing the license plate readers here in our, in our community. But I personally, I don't think we are ready for that.
If you're finished, I'd like to make a motion.
Please do.
That we receive a report and provide direction to staff whether to move forward with implementation of an automated license plate reader pilot program at specified locations within Half Moon Bay.
Do we want to give positive direction? Not whether, but...
I recommend that we receive a report and provide direction to staff to move forward with implementation of an automated license plate reader pilot program at specified locations within Half Moon Bay. Second. Sorry, who has the second?
I was just going to make a clarification. All we were seeking tonight was direction. I think we've gotten the direction. But if you want to take a vote on this, just to make that clear, that that's acceptable. So if you'd like to move forward, I think we have a motion and a second. And the motion would be to direct staff to come back with the program for approval.
It says to move forward with implementation
Yes.
of an ALPR pilot program at specified locations.
Yes. So if, if, if that's the direction, which is what I've heard, implementation requires us to bring back a contract for you approve, and these documents and policies that I've talked about. So that's, that would be the next step if, if that's the direction we've got, which I think I've got verbal direction of, but you could take a vote to confirm that.
Yes, let's, let's take a vote.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Riddick?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rarback?
No.
Mayor Jimenez?
No.
Motion carries.
And if I, if you wouldn't mind, if I could just make a couple of clarifications. We got some questions earlier, and I'd like to be able to respond to those. One is, the question was asked, how many cameras are we talking about here? There are seven locations, but as mentioned in the staff report, there are 16 units mounted at those seven locations to capture different directions of traffic, vehicle travel. So seven locations in the city with 16 units mounted on, in different places to capture the backend of vehicles coming and going. There was a question about the locations and the maps. We apologize. We had an old version of the, of the presentation. I want to defend Captain Alvin, who's a great communicator, and she actually made some really great modifications that would have clarified some of that. So we will update that on our website, and you'll have access to it until our next council meeting. And if you have trouble accessing it, just reach out to me and I'll send it to you. And then I think that answers the questions we've heard tonight. And as, as mentioned, based on your direction, we will return when we have a contract to approve for the actual units with Flock and some documentation and policies to have you weigh in on and vote on so that we can implement with the right guardrails in place. So, thank you.
What, what the motion said is not what you said. I'm confused. Are you getting authorization? Do you think to proceed with implementation or not?
Mr. Mayor, do you want me to respond to that?
Yes, please.
So, yes, we have been directed to implement the program. In order to implement it, I need the council to approve the actual contract. They didn't authorize me to enter into any contracts or any policies. I don't have unilateral ability to just adopt them. The council will, will take a vote on those at a future meeting when we bring all that forward. So that is implementation, and those are the steps required to actually implement the program. So, thank you.
Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you.
Next. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Very informative. Thank you. Item 3B, will we move to our next meeting on May 7?
We have a motion to do that.
Yeah, please, a motion in a second, and we don't need a roll call.
Can you please make a motion?
Move continuance.
Roll call.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Riddick?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rarback?
Yes.
Mayor Jimenez?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to any future discussion or possible item for the next agenda?
I have one.
Yes, Counselor Riddick?
So we heard from several members of Ocean Colony tonight wanting to discuss the issue of gate closure. And I know that that's a very complicated issue of coastal policy and coastal development permitting. But I don't think we should, like, not have a discussion with folks. I don't know if it's, it's worth having a discussion on site in Ocean Colony about all the issues, or having a workshop at a council meeting. But I, but it seems to me these issues are going to keep simmering, especially when some areas have gate closure, others don't. I think we, if we don't sort it out, it's going to be forced upon us to sort it out, and there's a lot of interest in it. So I think we need to deal with it.
If I may, at our next meeting, we will be bringing forward our annual summer beach tourism preparedness plan because we know that this is a big deal in our community. And we, staff are already prepared to bring this item forward as part of that discussion. I've, I've shared that with some of the residents that were here tonight, who will be sharing that with others so that they can make sure they can attend and hear. And one of the things we'll share is some of the legal constraints that we have related to the gate, and some of the plans that we'll be putting in place to address concerns in other ways. So the plan at this point is to include it as part of that discussion at our next meeting. And the neighborhood should be notified that they should attend if they want to hear that and participate. So.
Thank you, Matthew. Any more future discussions? No? Commissions or committee updates?
Vice Mayor?
No, it's a city council report.
Oh, city council report.
I'm on the board of the Peninsula Clean Energy, and as many of you know, your PG&E bills have gone through the roof. PG&E's generation rates have gone up at least 15%. Peninsula Clean Energy, which supplies the generation part of your bill, has not gone up at all. They made a definite effort to do the right thing for the people who are suffering with the high energy rates. So I just wanted to get that point across. If your total PG&E bill has gone up, it's not because Peninsula Clean Energy has gone up, it's because PG&E has gone up. So be aware.
Thank you. Any more council reports? All gets to go. Meeting adjourned. Thank you for...